For calendar year 2015, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out on this whole night. You want to do the call to order? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Hagerman?
Here.
Mr. Harding?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance in moments to silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first item on the agenda is our election of officers, beginning with the nominations for President. I'm going to open the floor by calling for nominations. I would like to nominate Shelley Ennis for President. I would move.
I'll second.
So we have Mrs. Ennis. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Third time, any other nominations? We've got Mrs. Ennis nominated. Call the roll.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
And Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on then, nominations for Vice President. Any nominations for Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Raimel.
I'll second.
Any other nominations for Vice President? Any nominations for Vice President? And for the third time, any other nominations for Vice President of the Board? Okay, Chris. Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Rice. Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Pardon me?
It's an election year.
It's an election year. Okay. All right, moving on down to, excuse me, the letter up. Standing Resolutions. Recommend a resolution to approve the following standing resolutions for 2014. Number one, to establish a second Monday of each month at 7:00 PM for the day and time of regular meetings in 2014. Two, designate the Vermillion Photo Journal as our official newspaper. Three, direct the treasurer to provide copies of the minutes of the last meeting two days prior to the next regular meeting and to waive the reading of the minutes if said is done. Four, authorize the treasurer to pay on abstracts and invoices monthly salaries and bills within the approved appropriations. Request from the Erie and Lorain County auditors, advances on tax settlements as monies are collected. Invest the funds of the district as they are available. Establish funds as necessary when requested by law or auditor or state. Open and read bids immediately after the time for filing if bids have expired. Five, authorize the superintendent or his designee to act as the first purchasing agent, act as the federal programs coordinator, act as compliance officer for the Equal Educational Opportunities Act Title IX and 1972 Civil Rights Act, Family and Medical Leave Act, Bureau of Workers' Compensation, Public Employment Risk Reduction Program, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, American with Disabilities Act. Approve student activity funds for the statements and budgets. 504 Coordinator. Approve the emergency and temporary employment of personnel in compliance with policy. Provide coordination of required asbestos inspections. Act as safety coordinator. Approve the use, excuse me, of school buses within state and local rules. Approve the use of volunteer and/or employee's personal automobile to transport students to or from school or school-sponsored activities. Authorize the building principals to sign contracts such as student activity contracts, student pictures, school annuals, athletic contests, and the like. Appoint the superintendent or his designee as the Board of Education's hearing officer for appeals of suspensions and expulsions of students. Authorize the appointment of the boards representative to act as designee for the Board of Education to hear student expulsion appeals. Authorize the athletic director to act as purchasing agent for the athletic fund. Establish a service fund in the amount allowed by law of $3,500 for the Board of Education within the general fund for the remainder of the fiscal year 2015 and for fiscal year 2016. And number 11, I'd like to appoint Dale to serve on the Vermillion City Parks and Record for 2015. Number 12, I'd like to appoint Mr. Harding to serve as legislative liaison. And 13, appoint Mr. Rice to serve as Student Achievement Liaison. Move that, Mr. Rice?
Yes.
14, authorize the participation in state and federal programs as they become available. 15, approve alternative tax budget for fiscal year 2016. Appoint the following firms as legal counsel. Bricker &amp; Eckler, Britton Smith, Peters &amp; Kaleo Company, McGowan &amp; Markley &amp; Company, Spangler &amp; Nathanson, Attorneys at Law, Swire, Patton, and Boggs.
I'll roll the roll. Second.
Any suggestions?
Yeah, I think on number five, I believe that last line needs to actually come out where it says approve the use of volunteer and/or employee's personal automobile to transfer students to or from school. On the latest policy update, we've actually got, it was pointed out that we've got a policy 8660, which actually forbids transportation except in case of emergency. So we either need to add emergency to this, or there's a policy that overrides what we're talking about. I've actually got it.
660?
Just, we just got an update today in policies. That was one of the updates, 8660.
So we'll split that off then?
We can always add that later, so we'll just strip it for right now.
Okay.
Because we have a policy in place. Yeah, we've got a discussion group meeting this week on policy, and that's one of the ones we're looking at.
Okay.
Did you anticipate, I'm sorry, any issues with coaches this week, driving people?
No.
And their personal vehicles?
No.
Okay, so maybe we have a couple weeks to... Yeah, I think we need to strike that because it's in contradiction to 8660.
So after you meet this week, we'll readdress it the next meeting?
Yeah. I don't know how we never caught that in years past, but there's some language coming out of the state.
Okay.
That's why it was brought up.
If it's covered in policy, you may not need it in here at all.
Well, this allows the policy to do it, so it's kind of...
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, I see, okay.
You may not need to add anything back, just straighten it.
Okay, anything else? Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Okay, and time to adjourn the organization meeting. Second?
Okay.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mr. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
655?
Five more minutes before we...
Regular meeting on Vermillion Little Schools Board of Education, January 14, 2015. Mr. Dawson?
Here.
Mr. Hagerman?
Here.
Mr. Harding?
Here.
Mrs. Ennis?
Here.
Mr. Rice?
Here.
Okay, we're going to introduce our Citizens of the Month. These are students from the elementary school that were doing good things. I'll start.
My name's Megan and my teacher's Miss Murray. I'm in second grade, and when I grow up, I want to be a rock star.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's William. I'm in third grade. My teacher's Miss Trex.
What do you want to do when you grow up?
Thank you. I don't know yet.
Hi, my name is Darren Frank. I'm Mrs. Parker's third grade class, and I want to be a flyer when I grow up.
My name's Leona, and I'm in kindergarten, and my teacher's named Mrs. Boo, and I want to be a dentist when I grow up.
All right, please rise, and they're going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving forward, onto number five, the Student Liaison Update.
Okay, on the agenda, do we have Caitlin Art and Anne Zidinski? I didn't think so. So push that to the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And then, Representatives from Trade converting athletic film to DVD, is that...
Yeah, do we have a representative from the company side? Very good. If you could keep it brief, if you can. Oh, okay, they just came in. We can start with you first.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, if you could step up to the mic.
Basically, our company's called Trade. We have a protocol, My Playing Days. Basically, the premise of My Playing Days is to pump into organizations like Vermillion High School that has a lot of game film, athletic game film, and other film that's kind of laying around in corners. Take that film, convert it to digital, and make it available on the web for anybody to purchase. And basically, it serves a couple purposes. One is that it takes these films that are all degrading slowly, and eventually this VHS tape's going to be unusable. First, it'll go to a format that'll be preserved, and basically, it helps make use of money because whatever revenue we bring in, we split with the organization, so we split it in a 100/50/50. And then, it helps basically provide marketing and a lot of tools for the word to get out there for all these films, and there is no cost to them. Basically, it's just we're going to take all the risk, and convert them all to digital, and we're going to make them available. We have basically like a commemorative package that we send it out in, and at the end of the, every month, you get a check broken down by category of all the films that were sold, and a year or half of what has been sold. That's the premise behind it.
Is this just for athletics, or can it be used for...
Anything. It can be used for anything.
Used for music departments?
Yeah, and actually, that's the draw of it. I've gotten more response for non-athletic film than I have for athletic film. And even the guys I like here, even the guys I know who I play football with, are more excited to see the video of them walking in at prom than the video of them playing football, so.
What's a DVD of prom costs or to download?
All of our videos are $45, so we're going to charge them, regardless of how long they are or the kind of things. And each video is one, whatever you give us, a VHS tape that has one game on it, that video is one game, that's what I need.
So who puts the packages together?
We do. It's all done by us, shipped by us, everything's taken care of by us. It's basically just, you provide content, and we take care of everything from there.
So we gave you, let's go back to sports, and we gave you the 1999 football season. Would you guys keep that together, break it down per game for $45?
Break it down per game. But the nice thing about doing something like this is, there's a base cost per video, but we have all kinds of options for incentives and for coupons. We could do discounts for reunion classes or package sets of an entire season and organize them. There's really, I mean, we can work together on, we're incredibly flexible in what we sell it for and how much we own it, so we can make it basically affordable for anybody.
I like that, just it seems a little expensive just thinking about it, but you can't get it down, right? If somebody from 192000 said, hey, can I get a video of my prom?
And there's no, it's not available. There's no risk.
No risk.
I think we discussed this at a prior board meeting quite some time ago, and I know you're local guys here too from the community, and we appreciate that you went back to the table with your partners and worked on the terms of...
Right, so the split was not very favorable for us last time.
Right, and we know that you're wanting to get the company public started, and that because you were hometown guys too, that you did that just in our, for our benefit, so we, I hope that the board's okay with it because I think it's a good opportunity for us to get that into our alumni's hands.
And even then, moving forward, every, we can continue on top of not just converting the old films that are here, but, you know, set up a system where every week after every football game, you send us the digital copy of the football game that you recorded, and that could be up and available the next day. Just to keep that moving forward, give it its library of film that anybody can go to and find, pretty much anywhere. Another nice thing to think about is that it's not only, if you think about a football game, you've got probably 15, 20 kids who play for Vermillion that are on that, they're going to be interested in that film, but you have a third fact, it's not just those 20 kids, it's the 20 kids who play for Firelands for the 99 season, or the 1996 season. They're going to be interested in that as well. And we make the site a searchable by team and by year, so if you look for Firelands '99, you have one film. If you guys upload it from Fireland '99, it's for sure.
If you guys offer service, we can pay a membership and watch it unlimited on lines streaming?
We're starting with DVDs. We're going to move into streaming a lot sooner than kind of planned on, but we're starting out with just some...
Something I think we need to consider though, moving forward with newer stuff, I don't think this looks very fair, figured for us at 50/50, because all the content that we give is new digital content, so I think we need to really just, in my opinion, just look at the old archive stuff first, and then as far as newer content, that's we got a different negotiation.
We can absolutely discuss that.
As long as you guys are agreed with that.
No, it's going to be up to us what we provide anyway, right?
Yeah. So that would be the...
Sure.
...line. Natural first step.
We're pretty built in discussing that, especially in the context of absolutely.
Sounds great. Yeah, it's great.
Thank you for coming in.
I'm sorry, quick question. Do you guys, I heard VHS, do you do 8mm film as well?
Yeah.
Great. I've got a closet of them.
Yeah, because actually, Brooke showed me, when I came in a little while ago, she showed me the film closet back there.
Right.
Real, there is a VHS back there, so definitely.
So I can verify all those fish stories he tells me?
Oh, yeah. Everybody else has ever talked to, talked to one of them before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, I have some questions.
Would the musical be available?
What's that?
The musical?
Anything that we can really provide, we think available, so that's across the board. I mean, I love you more than that, but I kind of like the... Caitlin and Anne, yes. Can you guys introduce yourselves and then...
Sorry, I'm late. I'm Kayla. I am a media library specialist and also broadcaster for teachers next year.
I'm Anne Zidinski. I'm a sophomore English teacher, theater, journalism, and this year is my first year taking over the yearbook. I'm just going to pass up a little packet for a little bit. I think we're a little short, so...
All right, we are actually here today to request fundraising opportunity to raise funds for elective classes for both yearbook and broadcast journalism and potentially newspaper, The Compass. Our thoughts have been that since the closing of South Street School, along with the closing of the Board of Education, we have found, in my library specifically, boxes upon boxes of memorabilia from both our community and our educational history. We have found that duplicates and triplicates of many of these things exist. Specifically, we have yearbooks dating all the way from 1921 that we have more than enough of. So we are hoping to create a silent auction and alumni social in order to probably sell these items off while still keeping enough in our own preserves and archives. We have actually brought a couple items to show as examples of what we would be wanting to do. For example, in a yearbook, one of the oldest yearbooks we have as a duplicate is 1921, all the way to the current years. And I think they're beautiful historical pieces that someone would come to cherish instead of us hoarding them in dusty boxes. We have a lovely set that is preserved in our library, and I think these extras should have a chance to find new homes and someone else will love them. But the main idea of our proposal, I think Anne would like to kind of discuss where some of these funds might go and where they'll be allocated to.
Before I say that, Caitlin and I, we've carefully gone through all of these items, and it was proposed to us the idea of a kind of history of Vermillion School sort of timeline. So we've set aside artifacts that we believe are irreplaceable, like we have one of the...
First report cards.
First report cards.
1881.
It's like a three by five inch card. Some of those items that are irreplaceable and are essential to our history that we wouldn't put in the auction. But in terms of the need for this funding, so taking over the yearbook, this year has been an interesting experience because it's been left in quite a bit of debt. We currently owe, we have that number, is 4,000, almost $398.
Yeah.
And that comes from, in 2011, the yearbook was actually in debt about $7,300, and the company, Jossens, that we work through with the yearbook, credited us for $4,000 of debt, and they made a deal with the current advisor to pay that off in a three-year time span, three yearly payments of $1,100. The next year, 2012, more debt was incurred, and the payment increased to $1,500 over the next three years. So that $4,300 figure comes from the final payment of that debt we need to pay off from 2011, and then the 2013, 2014 yearbook, we still owe, it was 2700, around that amount. And so that's just from last year's yearbook alone. So the culture of the yearbook in this school has really suffered, and the shuffling around of that program has resulted in a lot of debt, and I'm doing my best to make, do school fundraising and add sales to the community, and I think our goal is to make $4,000 just from that. But that $4,000 will only cover that hole, or will only cover the amount that we need for the 2014, 2015 yearbook, and then we still have all that money in the hole. So we're trying to figure out something to bring the balance back to zero.
In terms of allocating some funds for broadcast journalism, we had a great budget go through to start up this program. If any funds are left after we try to help yearbook, my hope is to get more student cameras so that it's a more one-to-one connection for students to have a better hands-on experience, so leave the classroom and take a camera and to become more integrated from away and within. Other things that we've brought, just to kind of give a rounded out idea of what would be included in this auction, I found when cleaning out the library, which is going under major renovations for our new broadcast journalism, a box that was ginormous, filled with years of old photo journals, and this is, they're beautiful and complete.
This one is gorgeous. It actually features young men that I know. For example, Jonathan Clark, he's in the middle, he's probably nine years old. I went to school with his daughter Mary, so I'm sure there's other people who, I don't know their names, but you probably will, and I think they would love to come and see this. I think they'd love to come and pay a few dollars for something that we have multiples of and take that home to cherish. Another example is The Compass, the 1941 edition. We have several of these, and it's very beautiful for how old it is, a little rough around the edges, but I think someone would come to love it. Also Vermillion artifacts, so interesting brochures, come live at Vermillion, it's a great place to be, advertisements that they did during the 50s about old downtown Vermillion, well, we would consider old, but new to them. Very interesting stuff.
I got a question, Caitlin.
Yes.
So you're only selling duplicates? We're not going to sell anything, we can only open one copy?
I have, we took photographs of the photographs and all the things that we have that aren't... So we have a lot of photo negatives that we can scan and like turn into prints, but because we have the negative, we'll have infinite numbers of those, but I took photos of everything that we were considering for you guys to view, so that...
So we're looking at selling pictures that we only have one of? What were you trying to say?
Well, we would keep the one and scan.
The copies?
Yes, scan.
Some copies, okay.
We do have duplicates of original photos, which we would be selling as well, only if we have a copy ourselves, which during 1950, it appears we did an advertisement for Vermillion Schools as a tax levy push, and we have several copies of beautiful black and white photos that are eight by tens and bigger, and we have multiples of those, and some of those are actually signed, which I think is very cool. The only one thing that we would put up to question is there's a lovely set of Erie County history books that are signed by the author. They're right here. And they're very, very old and in poor condition, so I don't know if they would even be of interest. I don't know where we would put them if we kept them, so that would be one question we would have. Were they from 1890s? No, 1921? Because remember, we thought they were older than that.
So that's all on the flash drive that you have?
They are, yeah.
And did you put a little explanation by them?
And then on that packet, there's an itemized list with suggestive reserves, so, for me. And we have everything like laid out, so... It's all in the library. We can bring them to you to see or come see them. I did my best to take loads of everything.
Oh, yes, that's right. Question, you contacted Rich Terrence, who does the old time stuff in the photo journal, does a little pictures and hill stories, but he has a little museum too. He might be interested in...
What's his name?
Rich Terrence.
I do know, to my knowledge, that every yearbook has been photographed, and you can find it electronically, and I know a lot of these pictures we did find on, it was a Vermillion historical website, so a lot of these have been scanned already. Okay. I don't know what has been left out. It's a lot of stuff in the library right now.
I think it's a great idea, just from my point of view, because it's, obviously, we're keeping the original, and we do really have as a school district a hard time trying to figure out what to do. As she said, as both of them have said, these things are sitting in boxes collecting dust, and it's good that someone would get the use of them and bring it to their home and... and it's good that someone would get the use of them and bring it to their home and we could make money selling it. So I think it's a win for us by allowing just to go through.
Two comments. One, great idea for fundraiser. I would take the time to review with, with the district, the fundraising calendar, so that you can pick a time where you think you might make the most money out of it and not, not get up against someone else's fundraiser where you're gonna be competing for the same money. And then the other thing is with the things that you have one of and you plan to keep, hopefully some plans and ways to display it, right, for people to see rather than have them in boxes, whether it's here in the school or maybe partnering with the public library to display things on a temporary basis and bring it back, you know. It's, it's a great idea, let people see those things.
Yeah, I agree.
Because finally, what I really like to do is, and we're trying, this is one of the things that we're gonna be emphasizing in the next year and years to come, is getting our alumni more involved. So this is an alumni auction. I think that that's a really big on-tap market. Not, I think, I know. We haven't done enough with our alumni. So I think that this is a great start and we just need to keep building on what we do with the alumni.
I guess the only question we have for you was how we wanted to set this auction up in terms of maybe food or drinks, kind of like a mini banquet, but not necessarily sit down. We were kind of hoping to eventually propose a small budget in order to frame some items and to kind of feed our alumni and make it feel like a special social event for everyone involved. I realize that can be hashed out later, but it's just a question I want maybe you guys to mull over in the next.
So I would recommend putting a proposal together.
Right.
And, and, you know, submit the normal paperwork that anyone does for fundraising and attach a proposal to it. But it sounds like a great idea.
Yeah. I mean, we're, we're up for any suggestions from anybody from the community or board or staff, even on the menu. Whether that it would be important to have it here at the high school or at some location in the community. And what we, what we invest, what would attract people.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Last thing, not on the agenda, but I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Pippin for an introduction.
Yes, we actually did this higher at the last board meeting, but we were not able to bring Mr. Stillman up until now as an introduction. Andy Stillman is our new athletic director and we wanted to bring him before the community tonight and before the board and introduce him. I'd just like to say that Andy really went through an extensive committee search. We spent a lot of time and effort to make sure that we had the right person. Confident that Andy's going to really work hard in this position and put us in the direction that has taken over now from Phil, who's done a good job for us. So I'm not gonna say too much more about Andy because he's gonna come up to the mic and tell us a little bit about himself, where he's from, what he's done, what his background is, and then if you want to ask him a couple questions. So Andy, thanks for being here.
Thanks for having me. Again, my name's Andy Stillman. Originally from the area, I went to Olmsted Falls High School. Was a three-sport athlete there and I'm an athletic guy, so I'm gonna walk around a little bit if that's okay. But, three-sport athlete at Olmsted Falls. I went to Ohio Wesleyan and played football there for four years, was a captain there on that team. Worked at Ohio State under John Cooper's last year as an assistant strength and conditioning coach at that time. Went on to get my master's degree at Bowling Green State University under Urban Meyer and his staff. And I was assistant strength coach there for two and a half years. Great experience there. Got into the high school teaching racket and was down in North Carolina, was a PE and health teacher down there, middle school level for a year. Had an opportunity to get back close to home at Oberlin College. I was a defensive coordinator there for four years. Went on to Manchester University, which is out near Fort Wayne, Indiana. Was a defensive coordinator there for four years, as well as strength and conditioning coach in all these places. And then most recently, I was at Marietta College the last two years as the defensive coordinator and strength and conditioning coach there. Really, really excited about what's going on here at Vermillion. As soon as this opportunity became available and I looked into the community and what was going on here, couldn't be more excited about the potential of what Vermillion can be. I feel like, honestly feel like we're on a precipice here of some great, great things are about to happen. And to have, you know, be able to put my stamp on a community, have an impact on so many people in such a huge way, I'm really, really excited about it. So we have got great plans going and we're looking forward to take this entire program to the next level. So, really excited about it.
Any questions?
What made you wanna get out of the coaching racket and get into the administrative end?
I think opportunity to get close to home was a big pull for me. So all my family still is around in the area. So I've got tons of nieces and nephews. My fiance is from the area as well, so that was really exciting. I think the opportunity to really expand my influence on, on people is really exciting. You know, on the college level, it's such a specific group of people that you're working with. It's all males in one sport, in one age group. And to be able to be in a school district like this, to really have an impact on male and female athletes of all sports, of all ages, not only that, what really excites me, to be honest with you, is to be able to coach the coaches. I know coaching. You know, as a recruiter in college, you know, I coached in college level for ten years. I've come across thousands and thousands of high school coaches. I know what good coaches look like, I know what bad coaches look like. I know what good athletes look like that come from those programs and bad ones. So for me to have influence on coaches, I think is, is super exciting to me and I'm really looking forward to that opportunity. So that's what really, really led me here.
Great question.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, I'm excited about it. If anybody ever needs anything, please don't hesitate to contact me. I'm here for your kids and for this community and, like I said before, I couldn't be more excited about it.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, appreciate it. I, I've got an Avon, girl, girls gave me an Avon, so you have to excuse me, I'm gonna head out and.
Just, just a point of clarification too. We still have our present athletic director, Phil Brechner, who's in the position and will be retiring in June. We brought Andy in as a transition and this gives him the opportunity to do some extra projects, learn the ropes, go out and make some visitations to other schools. So we've got a really full agenda for Andy, but he's here full-time right now, working in the district and will remain with Phil and get that mentoring piece in as well too. So just wanna let everybody know that that's, that's what's happening with his current position.
Especially with the new conference too. So we felt getting a chance to get out and visit some of those folks prior to being the AD would be a great thing to do, so.
Thanks again.
Thanks, Andy.
All right, number six, legislative update.
Ready?
Received and updated. Number seven, public participation. Is anybody out there that would like to address the board to come up and introduce yourself, please?
Hi, I'm Leslie Sheriff and I'm here on behalf of Gwen Howell and her situation and sort of the rest of the bus drivers for her support. We were just wondering, she's been here for twenty-two years. She has had an impeccable record and if we could have another executive session before we leave.
I'll, I'll speak for the board in this situation. This has been a very difficult situation and we have had one executive session prior to this meeting. And we agree with you that Gwen has been a very valuable employee for the district. And she has worked hard and she's done good things for the district. It's been in a very unfortunate situation and we have consulted with our attorney and at this point, what this becomes is a, a union issue basically that comes down to what the procedures are. And we have to follow what the union procedures are. The board has to follow what our procedures are. So you've requested the executive session, we've given one prior to this. So we followed what we felt and what we believed and what we know is our policy here. And at this point, we're going to have to just follow procedure and you're going to need to do what you need to do as far as a union goes and what the procedures are from this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Big fan, I'm not trying to hide behind Mr. Pippin, but when you come to personnel issues, it's real touching and we can't comment on personnel issues at the board.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Chris Griffith, I'm OCS's field rep. I would just like to ask on the part of Gwen Howell, to be able to speak with you in executive session with additional information. Please grant us that opportunity. Thank you.
Anybody else you need to address?
I'm going to, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn to executive session. For us, right now, no guests. I can request a motion. I'll second. For the purpose of personnel, what's the, here, I'll show you. Send the bag of the agenda. That's throughout this time.
Okay, so a motion to move into executive session dealing with appointment of dismissal of employment.
I'll second.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Habermough?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Executive session out at seven fifty-four. All right, before we move on again, any other public participations? All right, moving on to reports. First superintendent's report, Mr. Pippin?
The first item that's on the agenda on the superintendent's report is the fact that this is school board recognition. And I'd just like to read a brief statement here about that fact. As citizens who serve children who represent their communities, school board members face complex and demanding challenges. Few people fully understand the scope and the far-reaching implications of board member responsibilities. Tonight, we recognize the vital contribution that our board and our elected officials make to our district and the crucial role that they play in the education of our students. The job of a board member is to establish a vision for the education program, to design a structure to achieve that vision and to assure that the schools are accountable to the community. The job entails an endless string of meetings and school functions that need to be attended, rings of reports, agendas, proposals, and information that needs to be read and studied, and a host of many difficult decisions that need to be made. Our school board members contribute hundreds of hours each year to leading our district with an emphasis on what's best for the children that they serve. Their love of learning, along with the sincere care for students, staff, and the community will drive our board members to lead our students in achievement. In closing, I just wanna thank our board members for all you do. I could just tell you from Suzanne and my standpoint, we witnessed firsthand, and I know Suzanne's just been with us for a short while, but she worked with another board and I'm sure that it was the same situation with the board that you were at. It's countless hours and a lot of times it seems like it's underappreciated. I understand that and we don't tell you often enough, thank you for what you do. We appreciate you. Okay, the next item on my superintendent's report, and I'm just gonna keep this real brief, this was just brought to me recently, was a program that is through the care of the Lorraine County Drug Free Community Coalition. And it's concerning the dangers of alcohol, marijuana, and prescription drugs and the impact that it has on its families and communities. They're embarking on a limited-time campaign during the high school basketball season and we know that high school basketball's already started, so they are a little bit late to get this started. But basically what they're doing for awareness is they're doing a three-point campaign. And when a student, when a, not a student, but when an athlete, when a basketball player makes a three-point shot, they're going to be given a glossy eight and a half by eight and a half inch placard, basically, that says three, and then it's got some information about drug awareness on the back when the student makes a three-point shot. So it's just another way to bring awareness to the community that we know that this is a serious problem. As you know, our district has, I think, taken a step forward on what we do with our drug program. So I think that this is just another way that we're doing everything we can to make our students aware that we are aware of the issues, we're aware of the problems, and we're trying our very best in any way we can to educate our students, our families. And so this is one that I think doesn't hurt for us to be on board with, and I've already given the okay. It's not that this needed a board approval, but I just wanted to make you aware that we're going to be doing it. So if you see those at the next game, you won't be surprised. Any questions on that? Okay. If we can move on with the agenda, and I'd like to come back then to the superintendent's report. Tim Rini will give us a update on the facility. I do have the information, but I think it would be best that he would be here to answer the questions. And so we can move just that portion of my report up until that time and then we could come back to that. That's all I have. Okay, number four, recommend a resolution to terminate the employment contract of Gwen Glenn Howell effective January fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen.
I'll move. I'll second. Speaking for myself and I think the rest of the board, I know this is a very difficult decision. Mr. Howell, a longtime employee of the district, which makes this, like you said, really difficult. I think we make this decision with the knowledge that there is an appeals process, that if there's anything new that comes up or anything else additionally needs to be presented, there is, like I said, there is a process in place for that to happen.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Habermough?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Okay, on to the treasurer's report.
Recommend a resolution to approve the following fundraisers for Policy Fifty-Eight Thirty.
Over.
Prom'dadum Valentine Candygrams, February ninth at thirteen. Prom'dadum Fish Fry Dinner, March sixth. And Prom'dadum Bake Sale, Winter Sports Awards Night.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Habermough?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Recommend a resolution to accept a donation of eleven hundred and eighty dollars for Michael Singerson, Memorial Donor Advised Fund of Erie County Community Foundation. The donation was designated to support the Sadoray Middle School Music Project.
I'll move. Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Habermough?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Mr. Harding?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
With the USA Financial Reports. Want to go to the next one?
No.
Well, you've got it in front of you. Oh, come over.
So just a quick review of November. This is the comparison of the five-year forecast to the actual revenue and expenses for November of fourteen. And as you can see clear to the right, those are the variance, the percentage variances. We're, at the end of November, we're forty-one point seven percent through the year. And so that is kind of the target we want to gauge those against. Our total revenue is at forty-eight percent, which is a little bit higher. But keep in mind, real estate is only received twice per year. So expenditures, forty-seven percent.
I'm going to make a motion for adjournment.
Okay, and overall expenditures for November, forty-seven percent has been spent. So that is on the high side. I would recommend we move on to December. Unless you have questions specifically of November.
Just with November, with forty-seven percent being on the high side, is there anything unexpected there that the draw was higher than expected?
We have done some of the debt service payment, the payment on the building project. I think Houseville two sixty-four was in there too.
Under other expenses?
That's, that's your oddball things, out of there in treasure fees. That one I'm going to have to look into and I'm not sure why that one was up so high. So the next few pages are just all the other funds, because this is general fund and the emergency levy fund. Moving on to December. Sean, you go to December. So here we should be fifty percent through the year, that's our target. And we're at forty-nine percent on our revenue. Expenditures, fifty-seven percent. Again, we are on the high end, not necessarily on salary infringements, but on all the other categories.
We should be at fifty.
That's the target, fifty percent through the year. Everything's not perfect, but you would expect maybe expenditures would not be that high. I would like to have a work session, maybe at the end of the month, on the twenty-sixth, where we can go through more details on the expenditures. Because if you look at our total revenue, ten point eight million, but we've spent thirteen. We're in deficit spending.
Everybody good with that?
You said the repayment of debt service is the building project?
Yes, and Houseville two sixty-four, those both come out of general fund. One of the things that we met with ODE last week, Phil and Cindy and I, we're having staffing analysis to review, you know, how many FTEs of teachers and so on that we have. We need to provide more information to them before that's finalized. And then Phil and I are meeting with Jim Belada on Friday and we're going to start reviewing the five-year forecast and the stuff, mainly the salary benefits, I think, right now.
On your expenditures, that includes the loan payment for the construction project? Does the revenue include the loan? So the expenditures are thrown off because you're not showing the money you borrowed, or the money that's going out. So it's not a true, not true the deficits?
Excuse me.
That's okay.
That was the intent that you borrowed it, that the savings, I think, for utilities and consolidating would help pay that debt back.
Right, but we haven't started realizing those savings.
Right.
So I think we're assuming a little bit of debt because the savings aren't there yet.
Yeah, I think some are.
Yeah, okay.
But, you know, my goal is to keep our revenues and expenditures among. We're starting, expenditures are starting to get away from us, you know.
All right, so January twenty-sixth, what discussion?
I think back to the construction thing though.
Yeah.
But the money that's sitting in the bank that's paying for the construction isn't shown on the revenue.
Right.
Which is not truly coming in, but you're paying some of the expenses out of that money.
Paying it back. It's like a house on a car.
Right, well, what I'm trying to say here is...
I know what you're saying.
Okay. So I don't think that's truly three million dollars.
Because of that is what he's saying, is that truly that high?
Not operating expenses, but we are paying the debt back.
Right, but you're not showing the money sitting in the bank that's paying the loan portion on your revenue.
You're showing the loan portion as expenditures.
We're not getting any more.
But aren't you paying it out of the bank account, he's got that loan money in it?
Yeah, this doesn't include cash balance, though, this is, right, this is...
Right. So I'm just saying, so...
Revenue versus expenditure sold.
But that's not a true number, because you're showing the expenses of the loan, but you're not showing the money that's paying the loan.
You know, it is a true number because, because the money that, the money that we got via the loan went to our contractors and our folks that built the schools for us, right? And then the money to pay back the loan has to come from revenue that we generate by savings.
But that money, you're saying payment of debt service, that's payment to the contractors?
Yeah.
Or to the...
We're paying the bank back.
That's the loan payment.
Okay, so my original question, the loan is not under the, the construction project?
No, they're, the oh-oh-four fund has the money that came in that we borrowed and we, on the expense side, we're paying the contractors.
Okay.
So that's going to be in and out.
That's not in there, right?
It's not included as...
Okay, that was my original question.
Sorry, the debt payment is to pay back the loan.
It is the mortgage payment.
Okay.
So this is a true picture of general fund.
That's why when you said yes the first time, it made you start thinking.
I'm sorry, I may have misunderstood the question.
Are we good on the twenty-sixth?
I'm not, that's financial meeting, so I can do it, I'm open all next week. Or the week after. That's the only week in which I can't. I have no flexibility that way.
Do you want to just have everybody get back to us?
I would say, how about we check calendars and...
He doesn't get back, yeah.
Yeah.
Just let me know when I'll consider it.
Any, any questions?
So the goal is to really start digging in and trying to figure out what we're around with the work session?
Yeah.
And my concerns and concerns with even other funds.
Any other questions for... All right, on to, um... Nine discussion items?
I'd like to talk about the Vermillion Elementary School. We're going to be getting an update hopefully from Tim before we run out of time here this evening. But we've talked about this before. We know that the project's been delayed and they are, though, getting substantially farther along. And you'll hear that in Tim's report tonight. But best-case scenario is that when the furniture's all delivered and in, I think that we're looking at probably somewhere around the first week of March or mid-March. And then we're still looking at punch list items, but we could possibly take over the building as being substantially complete at that time. But then what we're looking at, as you all know, our original intention was to occupy that building right before Christmas time and use that vacation time as a transition to get everybody in the building, get the staff in the building. What I'm really recommending and thinking that we should do at this point is if we're not going to get the building until sometime in mid-March, it's disruptive because we still have testing that's going on in that building. You've got testing going on until the first week of... And I know that the staff really, it would be stressed by, and the students and the families, of trying to move us in sooner. So I'm really thinking that at this point, we just need to resign ourselves to the fact that we should, even if we do get a substantial completion date in the mid-March, let's just say, that we hold off and we don't bring the students in there this year. What we could do is, we can do some fun events. We could bring the students over, for example, for lunch and have the cafeteria staff go over there when there's a good warm weather day and have them go through the school and tour it that way. And we can set up some time that we can get the third graders possibly over there on a couple of events that they can enjoy the building a little bit. Because I think that, from what I've heard, there's maybe a little bit, a tinge of disappointment on the third graders' part that they thought that they were going to get into the building, now they can't. So I think we can brainstorm and think of some things for those third graders and their parents and just give them a little feel that at least they got some activities. But at this point, I'm thinking mostly about the education of the students and I'm thinking about how we're going to adapt and what would be best for us. And I'm just really thinking that the best thing for us to do is to just hold off if you're all okay with that.
I was going to say, I agree. We're looking at moving to testing, and testing is so important. And when you're going to have little secretary Johnson there like, hey, this is so cool, look at the new ceiling, and you should focus on taking this test, I think that doesn't work for anybody. I mean, I guess it's an argument, there's an argument to be made to get in there at least a little bit of time. Maybe you can work out the bugs for next fall. But I think the trade-off of those little potential low test scores, when you say completion, I mean, that means temporary parking, doesn't mean a parking lot's a hundred percent.
I was going to say, yeah.
Doesn't mean the grass is planted, there's no place for the kids to play outside. So I think there's enough construction that's not going to be done. And you add that to the potential for low test scores because of the excitement of being in the building, I don't think it makes sense for the trade-off of working out the bugs for the month. Just creating a loophole all around the building.
The grass didn't have a chance to take hold because they sprayed down the seed after really it was too late and didn't have time to germinate. So definitely we're looking at some landscaping issues. And as you just, as Dale mentioned, the fact that they did a pour of the aprons and most likely that will have to be taken back out and redone. There might be a whole lot of things that have to be redone. And we will, though, have to begin negotiation or in talks with the facilities, with the contractors about exactly what will have to be done. But Tim has just walked in just on time as far as being able to give us an update and let us know.
You're up.
So that's good, though. I'd like to be able to go to the staff and let them know that we're not going to push for that and we'll just plan on some fun events that are student and family-oriented, but nothing on an academic end, that we're actually moving the whole staff in there. We're going to begin teaching because that's a relief.
When is the furniture going to be?
I think some of it's already here, it's already in storage. And I think, though, that Tim can speak better than that as far as what exactly is here, so...
Before he gets, I guess where I was going with it was is there a potential, I know there's a lot of excitement, I know it's delayed, is there a potential to do some kind of open house if we get to a point?
Well, it's funny you said that. One thing, you know, as I was thinking about what, you know, our few teachers came in and it might be kind of a neat thing, they're wanting to bring a lot of alumni in, maybe a big fundraiser dinner or something that can conjunct with a big open house. A little history of Vermillion, you know, there's a lot of history to be shown. And then showing off our newest building, that might be a really great fun event. We could do a lot of, you know, a gala we could put together.
Yeah, there's a whole lot of ideas we can come up with. If you'd like to do the open house possibly before the kids get in in August and make it a, an opportunity for the community to see it.
Even a couple hours for people to walk through.
Sure.
It's already June. At least when the grass has the tongue to get in.
Well, I think people are anxious, they were excited for June.
Just be prepared, even, even the next month or something, just walk through.
But not be done though.
Yeah, maybe a month might be pushing it because of the weather
Yeah.
and the finish work and the furniture will not be set in totally by then. I think it would be nice to put the best foot forward as far as what it looks like when people walk in.
Have you received feedback from the staff on this subject?
From what the principal has told me, she believes that the majority of the staff is overwhelmingly wanting to wait.
Yeah.
And we've got, actually, one of our reps here tonight from the building. I went around, I was in the building today and just talked to a few of the teachers. And the ones that I talked to, they were hoping that that would be the case. Jeff Olson, he's the third grade teacher over there, or second grade teacher, so third grade, so mixing you up.
No.
Jeff, what's your thoughts?
I can't speak officially for anybody because we have to survey them or anything. But people I've talked to, you're not going to get any much opposition for, I suppose, going into next year. Again, test scores moving, you know, upending the kids, we're going through a lot of changes as it is the way we teach. And other things, so it would just be another transition that would make things a little...
Sorry, Mrs. Haber, who's right next to her, she's in that building right next to him. And I'm not trying to put you both on the spot by having you speak for the whole staff either. So we realize you're not speaking for the whole staff.
Waiting would be most beneficial for everyone.
That's, that's pretty much what I've heard from the principal and almost everyone that I've talked to, so...
I just told my wife about it and she's like, that'd be awful, it's embarrassing too. She's a school teacher, because, you know, your room is so hard to get set up, let alone tear it down and set it up in a week would just be...
It wouldn't be done. It would, it would not be done.
Yeah, it'd be just another obstacle in about how many years I'm going to be... She said I would be tears.
Go back officially to the staff and let them know that that's what will be the decision. We'll plan some alternative events and we'll brainstorm for some things and we'll come back to the board and we'll let you see what they are and you can let us know what you think. That's all I have for discussion items.
I did have one, yeah, I just had a very brief thing, you know. I just, I know we have Mr. Dawson, Mr. Habermough are on the policy team. I just had, like, to have some relook at our policies and just have a slight discussion about it next time with regard to pairs that get kicked out of games and making sure that we're doing everything we can to, for every sporting event, to have some type of verbiage that clearly states that, you know, this is a high school kids' event, that, you know, sportsmanship is everything and, you know, that things won't be tolerated from either side, just making sure that we're, you know, I know we've done a good job in some basketball games and I'm going to flip heads off, but I just want to make sure that there's some preset verbiage that we're saying before every single...
This would be a good time because we have the athletic director that just came in. And so if we're going to make any change to that policy and get any stricter than what we are, this would be the time to think about doing it, so...
You know, and right now we have with coaches, you know, always say, Jay, if you get kicked out of a game, you're out, spend it for two days, two games, you know. I'm not saying we need to change any policies, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're saying all the right things before the beginning of every game. It sets the tone immediately. Also, I think that someone had mentioned to me, I got a parent call. A parent called me and said, you know, at other venues, the referees are escorted out by police. We don't, our police just kind of still stay in the same area. Making sure for the safety of the officials and that kind of thing. There would be football being sort of a peril. Yeah, no, you're absolutely right, thank you. I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's the issue, so just making sure we're providing, we're going into new conference right now.
we're going into new conference right now. We don't, we need to lock things down the best we can, we're going to be great sportsmanship, you know, sportsmanship needs to be at the front of what we're doing, going into this conference.
But to be clear, at any venue, escorting referees out is not a standard procedure? That's, that's in the event, this is something happened or...
This is what this gentleman who's a basketball referee told me, that they were always escort, this is just what he said, I don't know. And you're probably right.
I don't think that's a standard procedure, I think it's, it's when they feel that there's something, a potential for something.
Yeah, and maybe the cop just needs, our police officer just needs to say, would you like to escort you guys out? They can make a decision, yes or no, so, after every game. Just look at it, I'm not trying to set any policy. You guys are the guys that come review that stuff and make a recommendation to the board you're working with. Also, I'm just...
We have a good, we have a good presence, though, at our games, local police are always there, they do a nice job of, you know, making themselves visible, so.
You know, criticize, I'm not criticizing anything, just trying to make sure that, you know, we're tightening things up as we go into this new conference to make sure that we're always putting our best foot forward.
And there is something said at the beginning anyway, isn't there?
Not all, it's about the, it's more directed towards the players, they, this is the OHSA, it's amateur athletes.
Okay.
And those kind of things. I think Dave's maybe directing something at a, you know, we're not expectators. Spectators cheering a positive manner, I think you can see that.
They do.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't know that it's consistent, all I'm saying, let's make sure we have that verbiage at every event it is set, you know. And I like to think it does, but I know for a fact, I've been to places where it hasn't done. So.
Is that something you check with the...
I will. As being redundant, Mr. Stillman coming in, this isn't the time to do it because he can make sure that it is consistent and that we do have a statement and we can look at the policy, though, again. We do have a committee for that, we can revisit it, see what it looks like. And in general, I don't think that you could ever talk about this enough, unfortunately, the society that we're in, it's getting more and more difficult because what they see on TV and at pro sporting events and sometimes even in college, the behavior that goes on, our students and our fans emulate some of what they see. So it becomes, it's becoming more and more challenging and I think the more and more we can emphasize that as a school district and what we do about the fact that we're not going to succumb to that, the better.
Maybe it's a banner or something that's put up as well, I don't know, but the bottom line is just trying to make sure that we are a first-class, safe place to come to is really what I'm looking for.
There is a, OHSA does have a program for positive sportsmanship, stuff like that. Phil is working on the guidelines.
Right, yeah, you had to read certain criteria and I think that we were late to get that up and it's, there was a deadline that we missed, unfortunately, but it's coming. We did apply for it and it will be up in the future.
That was one of the discussions I had.
Anybody else? All right. Moving on to number 10, the consent agenda. Okay, the superintendent treasurer recommends that the board of education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the board of education and adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one single motion, unless a member of the board, the treasurer, the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted upon separately. A, review January 13th, 2014 board meeting minutes. Attachment C. B, approve meetings of the minutes of the meetings of spouses. Attachment D, special meeting of December 6th, 2014, regular meeting of December 8th, 2014, special meeting of December 22nd, 2014. C, approve the appointment of Lois Arnold to the Ritter Library Board of Trustees for the period from January 13th, 2015 through December 31st, 2021. D, approve section 125 flexible benefit plan adoption agreement with American Fidelity Assurance Company for calendar year 2015 with amendments, that's attachment E. E, authorize the continuation of the flexible spending plan in the amount of $200 for all non-exempt employees for the period of January 1, 2015 through December 31st, 2015. F, approve the following employment action as listed. Any, any items to be removed for consent agenda?
You can move first, driver.
We do, you move first, okay.
I'll second.
I don't have any items to remove, but is there, is there a reason of concern? I see two bus drivers taking leave of absence here, it already happened and the earlier personnel action that we took, is there a concern on the staffing and the bus driving area?
We're down drivers and we've been struggling to hire drivers and I could just tell you that we've got an ad out there and we're searching as fast and as furiously as we can.
Is this something that Rachel Wexley offers, do they do bus driving?
Yeah.
But you can also borrow drivers from other school districts, I mean, as far as their subs. Adapted to firehorns or Addison, one of those, if they've got extra subs, you can borrow them.
Have we done that?
That's, honestly, that's the first time I didn't realize that, so thank you for telling me that. I will find out, I'm sure, if I'm not find out, we'll make an appointment. I don't think Mr. Williamson might know that either.
Yeah, I'm not sure that you'd get from Madison Firehorns would be Milton Saylor, the recent director of the West Garage. Let's see if he's...
So are we, like, just a little hurting or are we hurting?
Well, we've had to double up on some rods and when we don't have the drivers to cover those rods, that's not easy because then those drivers have to scramble, they don't, that's not their regular rod. And that's stressful for them, their jobs are stressful enough, let alone to then now take on extra kids, have to worry about where stops are going to be, and so we really need to get, we need to get this covered. We will, we're working on it and that's a good, good thing to know, we'll pursue that.
Do we have employment ads out?
We do. We do, but we're going to try to increase the, the number of places, we're looking to see if there's more places that we could put ads out than what, what we have. It's, it's a difficult, challenging job and I don't think that there's a lot of people that...
You're looking for something with a CBL?
Yeah, you have to have the proper certification.
Let us know if something else we have to do there.
Yeah, I'll definitely look at it.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Habermuth?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mrs. Zinn?
Yes.
Mr. Rex?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item 12, second public participation. Mr. Smith?
I'd like to share some observation that I've had over the years of closing. I've known a number of superintendents and they all told me it's the most difficult position they ever had to do, is whether we have school or not. When I was in high school, the assistant superintendent lived next door to us and he had the same problem, but in 12 years that I was in school, we got out by time. And nobody had bus service in town, only the township. Well, a couple of things I've noticed and a number of people I've talked to agree, we start too early. My grandfather was a school bus driver and later with ODOC and he said, we have to have time. Here in Vermillion, we're lucky that we have good snow removal by the city and the township is excellent, but it's hard to get ready for our bus runs as early as six o'clock. So I would hope that the board would look at that very seriously. Another thing that parents and the students themselves have to control, they don't dress for the weather. I see high school boys wearing shorts when it's zero. Now, I've never got a house, but anyhow, that's a thing I think to consider. Until I was in the sixth grade, I wore leggings and boots and we walked four times a day. I know all of you. But anyway, that certainly dress is a problem that the schools can't control. Now, the poor teachers in elementary used to have to help us block our heartaches and be sure we were all bundled up before we went out. Along those same lines, I couldn't believe when I came to Vermillion that there was no ordinance that requires no removal from the sidewalks. And now, this safe route to school, I'm all in favor of it, but it won't work unless the snow is removed. The city is the worst violator. I went up and down, yeah, street over here.
Main Street?
No.
Little and 60?
Douglas.
The, the one that the new school's on.
Douglas.
Douglas, right. The kids are walking in the middle of the street and the city is the worst offender. They don't even clean around their city building. I've been in contact with the mayor's office twice. Council needs to require no removal. Not the kids' fault that they can't, a friend of mine, an adult, had to walk from downtown out to the shopping center on Saturday on both sides of Little Bay, he had to walk in the street. And he's 30 years old. So we expect the kids to do that and we're going to have more and more kids walking now. To get on the city, at the mayor's office, thank you for calling, that's all I get. So this is a community problem and the safety, not only of our kids, but our adults. I can't see why the business people don't clean their own sidewalks. I can't go downtown and walk around without waiting through snow, or at least needing some time. So I know you don't have any control, I want to compliment the school, though. They clean their sidewalks and the driveways, the best in town, and the city can't do it or won't do it. There was one of the things, oh, talking about behavior at athletic events. When I taught at least a dozen times, the administration had to call the teachers out to keep people from going on the floor. They were the adults, the kids were following. When the teachers got out there, the kids pretty much listened to us. Some of the adults said terrible things to us. They shouldn't be on the floor anyway, but when they were out there to demonstrate or go after a referee at least once, not the kids' fault, and I don't know if that still happens anymore. In college, I was a campus police officer and we had to take the officials off a number of times. Once, I wanted to get a hold of one or two, but that was particularly a bad situation. But anyway, I think our kids do a terrific job when it comes to good sportsmanship. Over the years, there's only one problem I have with basketball people, though, the younger kids hang out in that room where they have snacks and so forth, the whole game. And I will say, the time or two I went in, they gave something to drink, they offered me a seat, rice, but they should be out there, maybe should close that during the game. But those kids shouldn't hang around there, if they want to socialize, they can do it at home. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Anybody else?
Yes.
First, school board recognition day, month or whatever it is, I think you guys do a great job. I heard a lot tonight that's really encouraging as a, as a resident and taxpayer here in the great township and the great school district, especially like the idea of the open house. Hopefully you have a cool event and I'd love to attend it. But the reason I came to the microphone is actually something that struck a chord with something that Mr. Dawson had just recently said, an observation based on the events of the evening and the agenda items of the evening regarding the transportation situation. And, you know, as Mr. Penpen stated, very difficult position to fill. And it's such a crucial position for the school district because if transportation breaks down, the entire purpose of the school district, the entire function of the school district breaks down with it. If you can't deliver your students to school consistently and on time and have the faith of the parents and students believe that that will occur every day, you know, young kids are used to routine, right? When you're breaking young kids' routine for the same reason that it was recommended and I believe is a great idea, not moving into the school at the last minute, when you have children ride different buses, they get all wigged out about it, right? They get, you'll see them crying and such. Very difficult to keep track when you're interested in drivers. And while there is opportunities, there are opportunities to borrow drivers from other districts, challenges you create now are new because those drivers don't know where they're going, they're following handwritten notes about who to pick up in the dark with snow-covered mailbox numbers. And you miss places, you miss drivers, kids get upset, parents are calling, why did you pass by? That starts to happen, right? So it is a huge challenge and one of such crucial importance that honestly, probably gets overlooked at times, right? You just assume that that building, which is separate from everything else and that those employees, which are separate from everybody else, runs on its own and you address reactively those challenges that are brought to you, those letters that you'll receive or those phone calls that you receive. I think one of the things that might be very helpful is something else I heard tonight and actually, Mr. Penpen, you had mentioned it, when you ran like an unofficial survey of the elementary school, the teachers, what do you think about this, right? I think that maybe that should also happen with the bus drivers. Talk to the bus drivers because one thing that we're not seeing when it comes to all those resumes, or not all those resumes, all those wanted ads that go out, all those solicitations, you know, where do you get your best employees? You get them from your best, other best employees referrals. And the question we'd have to ask ourselves is, why aren't our, why aren't we getting referrals? My neighbor, my friend, this person would like to drive, why don't we have a list of those people who would love to be drivers, but they're on the waiting list? Those stay-at-home moms, those folks that may be retiring from jobs, why aren't we getting those? And there has to be a reason. And I think what we need to do is determine what that reason is. Is it, is it something in the way the hours work? Is it something in the way the contracts are? Is it something in the way of a culture, maybe, that says, don't have my friends work here? It's all possible. And I think until we get to the root of those problems, this transportation issue will always haunt Vermillion. It's pretty bad right now. For full disclosure, my wife's a bus driver. She didn't leave, she's sitting over there right now, okay? But of course, I hear a lot of things, right? But, you know, we really need to get to the root of this, of this, this challenge because, you know, one bus not showing up on time disrupts 50 kids and has 30 irate parents, right? Do that with three or four. And think about even worse, we have these challenges now, what happens if whatever the underlying cause is gets worse? Then you lose four at a time. We're short three, four quit, now you're short seven, you can't recover from that. How do you now transport your students? Right? What if it happens during testing season, right? Then all of a sudden, our test scores go off, right? So it's, it's something that really should receive a high level attention, of attention. And I do know that there are folks at the seat of the table there who are getting a grasp on it and that are working for the good, right? And that's my int- And that's my intention, is to see things good, right? It's not to see anything bad. I love Vermillion. I love this school district. I want nothing but success for it, right? And so, I just think that's something we really need to take into consideration and create the Blue Ribbon Task Force or whatever to find out the root causes. And I would just start with, why aren't people recommending their friends? Or why are they telling their friends, "Do not work here"? Which I can tell you that both of those are occurring. Why? I think it wouldn't take long to go through those and really start a program to build that culture of excellence, of professionalism. You know, the culture that the taxpayers of this school district deserve, the culture that you guys have worked so hard to instill in the school district, that really will move the school district forward. With that, I give back the balance of my time.
No, I thank you. I think we made some valid points.
I'm a fan, I'm a fan of that character.
Gee, I never get a point.
Reven is a solo whip, my friend.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to comment and also say that, you know, some of the things that you brought up and Mr. Smith brought up tonight are very good points. And let me just start, go back to Mr. Smith and start with him first and what he suggested that we need to think about. And that is the change of a possible start time and have a later start time. We've looked at that backwards, forwards, inside and out. And there might still be something that we can do at the beginning of next year that gives us about a ten-minute window. But that's about all we have, is about ten more minutes that we might be able to. The problem being sports. Unfortunately. It does have something to do with it because kids have to be to their athletic events at a certain time. So, you can agree with that or disagree with that, but I know that we have kids that are in athletics. And unfortunately, there's a time deadline that we have to have them there by.
You've also got the option of a two-hour delay. So, if there's a way that two hours would benefit the city to get the roads passable, in lieu of canceling, you've also got that.
Well, yeah, and maybe I'm misunderstanding then what he's saying because I'm talking about an everyday.
Right, he's saying consistently start, but if there's a day, in lieu of moving school back to a nine o'clock start, if there's a day that snows that you think two hours would benefit us by starting later, you have that option as well.
So, I was thinking on a daily basis that he, that that's a misunderstanding on my part. Yeah, I get that there's a, that we can do a two-hour delay. And that is a tough call because when you do a delay, that's very disruptive as well. And you'd rather almost close down for a full day rather than doing a two-hour delay. And we've done one since I've been here. And that was probably tougher than any other day that we've had because we get a lot of complaint from families on that. So, it's a tough call. But as far as going back to the time that kids are out there early and the buses are running early and the whole culture of things, there still might be a ten-minute window that we can bump things up so that kids are not being out there so early on a pickup and then the drivers are not struggling quite as much. Ten minutes is not a whole lot, but we're looking at that and we'll think that that's a possibility to do it in the future. Going back, though, to, you know, the other comments that have been made about the the contract and the culture and the drivers themselves and being underappreciated. Just like our board tonight, when I read that statement to them, unfortunately, I read that once a year. And we don't tell you often enough that you do a good job. It's the same with the bus drivers. We don't tell them often enough that they do a good job. It's just like they're out there on an island by themselves, they're running those routes. And I know I can do a better job of it. I need to continue telling them. I do when I go out there, hold my meetings and try to get them all involved in a big group to tell them, "I'm not going to tolerate misbehavior by kids. They've got a tough job to do." And so, we just need to do more of it, though. And we do need to look at the culture, though, too, because we have management that runs that bus garage. And there's got to be expectations about how management treats people. And that's important. And I could tell you that I don't look the other way with the management. And just alls I could do is ask our drivers, "If there's problems, tell me." And I will do my very best to make sure that whatever has to be done, that they're treated properly because their job is hard enough. And I'm working on the culture. I could just say that it has to get better. There has to be higher expectations. I know how I want to treat people and I know how they need to be treated. And that's part of the culture aspect of things that go on. So, lots of things need to be done. Lots of things need to be made better, the garage and the bus garage, and the way we do things is no exception. It's a work in progress, and I'm not making excuses, though, to tell you that we need to get better. And we're not good enough. I could tell you that. So, point's well made, and we will work on it.
Won't you have more buses go next year with more people walking?
Yeah, we don't, we don't know exactly how that's going to fall out, and that might, I'm not sure. At this point, as you know, we covered those routes. But we won't have to cover them now if we're not going to open one of them. But that's one thing we talked about. So, we'll see how that shifts out.
If you went earlier, and I was wondering whether you'll have any more buses available to transport the kids to their after-school activity.
If we're going to need to, we're looking at that now to be sure that we've got everything covered. And we'll have to be sure if we need the extra buses.
Ready to go back and Mr. Brady? Mr. Brady, if you'd like to come up and give us an update on the facility, please?
I'm sure you've all been getting my weekly updates as I open the app. And that's been going well for me and for you. You're up to speed with a lot of this, but I will go through it a little bit. The elementary school, we're still waiting, the contractor, to show up with some roofing materials to finish the coping around the roof itself and the fascia. Copings are scheduled to come in this week yet. Those are a couple of small areas on some walls that just got covered on the top. The fascia's around the entire building. That material's just not been produced yet by the manufacturer. All the metal panels are complete. Illuminators entrances, including the storefront, and interior glass are ninety-nine percent complete. HVAC controls are complete. We're just waiting to get the internet online at the school in order to have that up online. Painting, only touch-up and miscellaneous work remains. The ceiling fans are all in with the exception of some small areas where work is being done above the ceiling. All the casework is complete. Flooring is ninety-nine percent complete. The last piece is the community space on the east side of the building. The gym floor is complete and has one coat to finish on it today. And that'll be done by January twenty-sixth. That'll be one of the last things that's finished. Moveable partitions are complete. Interior signage is nearly completed. The exterior signage will come on as the weather warms this week and next. It should be completed next week. Final cleaning, I'm a little concerned with. There was a single window cleaner today, and they said it'll start in earnest later this week and next week. Punch list was scheduled to start January seventh and cannot until the final cleaning is at least progressed to the point where the architect can get into certain areas of the building. Mechanical, electrical and plumbing is going through final finishes. All of the HVAC units are running. Installation of the furniture is scheduled to start on February ninth. And of course, that's a separate contractor. It's not the general contractor's work. The technology work is continuing. All the cementals have been approved. And we gave Suzanne's office a recommendation to extend the contract to February twentieth today. And that's related to the time that RFC is falling behind, general contractors falling behind the schedules. It's a no-cost change order, just extends the time for the technology work to get completed. So, we recommend when she gives you that, to act on that as quick as you can. The school, I guess in general, the school will be substantially complete on February twenty-eighth. Furniture will start, excuse me, January twenty-eighth. Furniture will start February ninth, and it'll be done by the end of February. And we'd be ready for you to move in, you know, as soon as the first week of March, is the way I see it right now. The high school and middle school, the contractors responded with the letter saying that all the punch list is complete. I walked through with Lesco last week, and there are still items that need to be completed that were not, that they thought were done but are not done, or they missed, or for whatever reason, they weren't done. And they do include the flooring items. They've been a pot, not a problem, in the bathrooms and in the kitchens. But again, they haven't been paid for that work. They won't be paid. We're in the process of figuring out if we're going to supplement that work or exactly what's going to happen. It certainly hasn't been overlooked. None of the, none of the, none of the items will be overlooked. And the fieldhouse?
I've got a couple of questions, but that's for you. There was a note, Lesco, you want doors?
Yes. The doors that came out, when we saw them, they were not, we could see that they were not as was specified. And we got, we got with the contractor, and that was true. They, they didn't realize it apparently, although I saw it in a minute. I don't know if they didn't realize it, but they didn't realize it. The architect has gone back through and reviewed, looked at the cementals for the doors that are on site, and done their due diligence to see, you know, what's different about them. And the end, the end of that is going to be that the contractor has offered a substantial credit, and the architect is going to recommend to the district that they take the credit.
So, what was the issue with the composition of the door?
The makeup of the interior of the door, yeah.
Is there any heening or noise?
No, no, it has nothing to do. It's with the, the door that was specified is, works for for twice as many cycles as the door that they brought out. But as it turned out, for a school building, the door that they brought is sufficient for a school building. But it just wasn't what we paid for. They're using that door. The contractor provided us with the list of schools that they're using that door at. I mean, it doesn't look any different on the outside. It's just about what it's, what it's made of inside. And it's ability to hold the hardware. There, there's going to be some changes made to the way that the hardware is fastened. In particular, the closers are going to be through-bolting instead of flush-bolting. I think that's the biggest change.
I've been through the building a couple of times. It's really dusty in there. As part of the final cleaning, do they change out the filters again?
Yeah. Understand when the HVAC units were started, that the return air ductwork is not being used. And that, that's the biggest concern is that the return air.
There's a lot of dust, I just.
There is, yeah, there is. And they'll clean all that dust. The ductwork will be inspected. It has to be cleaned, it will be cleaned. Oh, yeah, everything, everything will be gone over. It's got to be gone over. The ductwork has had the filters in it now, and they've been changing them. And again, they have doors off the units, filters, excuse me, filters on the doors, and they change those filters.
My other thing was, I noticed the humidity seemed really high in there. That's probably just.
I think it's warm, but the humidity's being monitored and has to be maintained.
Is the gym floor it?
Yes. Yeah, the humidity sits on the building, is being monitored for humidity. So, they're keeping it warm just for all the materials that come in there.
Touch base on the tile, look at the, I thought the main hallways looked pretty good. I don't know if it was a different person that came in. And the kitchen still is, just drives me nuts. I thought the hallways, which were a lot more mild.
The kitchen is the same guy we've been dealing with. In these schools, they got a new guy to do the, all the other corridors and all the other.
The hallways look good.
Much better.
Tim, I have a couple of questions, too, before we move on to the fieldhouse. For the elementary school, if they're shooting for January twenty-eighth for substantial completion, we still have that, where they need another layer of asphalt. We have to wait until, you know, the weather warms up to get to that, whatever temperature it's listed in the plan, right? So.
They've gone around and, and at all the walkways and entrances, they've placed asphalt as a temporary measure so you don't have to jump the curb, so to speak, to, you know, a smoother transition. So, the end result of that not being in is there's a couple, I think, they got kind of three parking spaces that if it rains real hard, we may not be able to use. They kind of fill up pond with water. But other than that, the, you know, the buses could run out, the cars could park out. They've even striped it when the arrows in.
Well, I thought we talked about that the asphalt, that other layer, the buses couldn't go on it without, without damage.
Well, if it's damaged, they're willing to take on, they've said, if they damage it, they'll tear it out and put new in, whatever on. I mean, understand the contractor is very anxious to give to substantial completion.
Sure, and I would make sure, too, that his date means that it's all done. We're not waiting for another layer of asphalt.
It's, it'll be, I mean, it gets into, the legal description of substantial completion is that that the building and facility has progressed to the point where it can be used for its intended use. And at that point, we think we'll be able to say, I think the architect will be able to give them a certificate of substantial completion. The understanding that if something on the asphalt gets damaged or needs replaced, they're just going to have to do it.
I noticed some of the blocktop, they made little ramps.
That's what I'm talking about, yes.
The only problem is when you start snow plowing and you're down, you're going to hit those little ramps. If you got the plate level, you're trying to plow the drive, you get within that close to the curb, you're taking those little.
Oh, you mean the ramps on the side? Yeah.
Because it's not level with the other, yeah. If you plow, it's usually that, not even hit a little edge of the ramp.
For that six-foot worth of wall, yeah, I suppose they'd have to be careful where they plow around. There's probably four of them, or the blocks.
I was curious, they have a plow, I was curious to see how they'd be around if they had a plow.
Yeah, yeah.
And then, one, the punch list for the high school, and a month ago, we talked about in Suzanne's office, that the floor is not, even, she's got that drop-off. Is that going to be fixed or is that on the?
That's something, that's really not a punch list item. That floor was leveled as the documents called for. I mean, if there's something that we want to do, we could certainly do it. They, they went in, there was a masonry wall in that room there. It used to define the art room from the counselor's area. And the buildings were built, or the rooms were built in two different nights. They smoothed it out over a six-foot area, but I know what, I know exactly what we're talking about. talking about. If we want to do something more, um, we should just.
Pretty severe, I mean, we laid a wall down there without hesitation, the wall's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's pretty big too, it's not.
It's something, we want to do it, but, but to be, we'd have to have the contractor price. I mean, they did do what was asked of them per the contract. I could ask Lesco to take.
The contractor did say you provided a level four?
No, it did, no, clearly not. No.
I mean, she, she may have potential health issues.
Yeah, I mean, she didn't switch all around because of the way she was sitting because the floor, the hallways got to drop off.
Unfortunately, nobody realized that, but now when we were done and she explained it to us, I know exactly why it happened. A lot of the other rooms, we did pay to level them because there was, uh, a pavement issues in those rooms, so they went into all those rooms. But that room, we just, we just did that. Ordered them to put the leveling, got a bonding there. And again, it's something that can be done. And I will have Lesco looking at it, uh, the next week or so.
Might be cheaper to get locking wheels on your chair. We gotta get a level.
I mean, where I'm sitting now, I'm fine, but, you know, I'm okay, but I don't know if you want to make, make.
Well, we should look at it and see.
Look at it and go.
Well, just look at it and see if it's.
You got your office for us. I mean, it's, it's probably the way you were sitting, you don't realize it, but you're hunched over.
Oh, I know.
And so I'm sure you get stiff necks and, yeah, exactly.
I know, but I have a.
We'll get a level here.
Tim, going back to the doors, sorry to go all the way back that far, but from what I heard from our, our operations guy, that we weren't going to accept those doors. Now, tonight I'm hearing that we are, so it looks like things have changed. And I get it because I went over there today and I took a look at the doors and they don't look different to me and they don't feel different. But my only concern would be if we are going to take the extra, we're going to take the money. Are we assured that there are schools that have those doors? And you said that the cycle of the doors is, is doubled that, that we order.
The doors are still guaranteed for life. They're all the same guaranteed.
Yeah, they feel really happy, they feel good and they feel just like these doors.
So what happened when James and I was on the conference call with everybody, the doors were rejected because they didn't meet.
Right. And that's what I thought the intent was, is not to accept them.
Well, we couldn't accept them because we didn't have the, the product data at that time, but we listened to the contractor, from the, the door supplier that day and said, you know, he said, I gotta tell you, I screwed up, but here's the difference between the doors. Look at them, I'm going to offer you a credit and if it's worth it, let me know. If it's not, I'll replace all the doors.
My only concern, back to my question, if there's a composition issue on the door, there's gotta be a noise rating difference. If one's solid wood and the other one's made of something else, there's gotta be a noise rating.
They're both solid wood, though. It feels solid, like solid wood to me because it's, it's really heavy.
But there is a difference because there's a big price. So where I'm going with it is, so that door may work in another school, but we're in this 21st century where we've got a lot of open teaching going on always.
I don't think it's about sound. How, how, it's, it's all about the, it's all about hardware connections. That's what it's all about.
So no sound? I'm just concerned about the sound, meaning that always, we're trying to encourage, you know, that's our library, that's our cafeteria, there's going to be more sound going back and forth. That's pretty tight in there.
I'll, I'll look at that too. I don't think.
Yeah, that's a good point. And the other thing that you mentioned was, once it drilled through and once a flush comes, what, what's the difference?
It's drilled through, it's more stable.
Um, if you have a solid wood door, you could drill into this door and it'll, it'll hold the closer. If, if it's not as good a material, the, the material that's made up of the other doors is not as structurally sound, so you drill through with the drill bolt, with the sex bolt it's called, and there's, it's more like putting a nut in a bolt than, than a jaw.
Solid wood.
It becomes positive.
Could you check on the mold ratings, just for such a thing?
Well, I think if we, I mean, obviously, it's like those doors for a reason, like why accept the original one?
That we would have that option if we could.
Don't, I mean, does anybody else have a?
Well, the original spec on the doors was that the architect's recommendation?
Yes.
And I guess, based on the data you have, have, has Lesco weighed in on that or?
Oh, that's, believe me, it's only their recommend, I mean, I can't.
No, no, I'm saying, so they, do they recommend sticking with the doors we have and taking the credit?
It's totally, I would say that, I mean, you'd have to speak to them, but they, now that they've reviewed these, maybe it's something they didn't know about or consider or whatever. And now that they see it and they say, well, you could save that much money, this door is, is okay to use.
But that, that is a good point, especially the outside doors and the ones that are going to be in the community space are going to have to be extra softer. And I don't know if there's a difference.
Doesn't affect any exterior doors. It's only, it's only the interior wood doors.
Not facing the hallways.
Right. Classroom doors, gym doors.
So it's figure, we don't want sound in the hall.
We don't want sound.
Right. That's what we're having a library and we, we don't have cafeteria going in the other way.
That classroom, yeah. I mean, you could check with Lesco.
So I guess just feedback on what the, the actual difference between the two is.
They want Lesco to recommend?
Is there a compromise?
I don't want the doors being so thin when the kids are eating lunch, they're getting yelled at to shut up because of class going on inside the closed door.
I just thought there's a reason they ordered those in the first place, so why take classes now? Can you check into that?
If the whole thing, if the whole thing is being processed, if, if, if the whole, probably a report about what they are, why they are, why they're recommending them all. I have a pretty good understanding. I wish I would have samples tonight to show you because we have, we have cut through samples of both doors. Lesco has them right now and they drilled the screws into them and they took some testing to. But I expect them to recommend those doors. They've told me that. Um, the last building I have is the, um, is the field house. We just got an update today and I'm sorry, I only have three copies of the schedule because I just got it this morning. Uh, but the field house, the building itself, delivery date of the building has been delayed by about four weeks. Um, and it may impact final completion date. I just found this out this morning. We're going to meet with the athletic director to talk about the use of the building, the intent of it, you know, over the summer. If you remember, we had intended to open the building, the entire building on July third and to have the weightlifting facility opened earlier than that so that you could move right out of this building and into that. That, that may not be possible. Now, we don't know. I mean, I, again, I just got this this morning, so really haven't been able to dissect it a real lot. We, uh, I did find out today that they do need the weightlifting facility, the whole month of June and the whole month of July. It's just, it just continuing operation.
Well, we need them out of here.
Right. June first. Right, we gotta get out of here in order to remodel. So a couple of possibilities we've talked to James about are moving the weight room to the, what I call the old, the second floor of the gym in the high school.
Wrestling room.
The wrestling room, yeah. Or another possibility may be the stor-, well, the storage area of the new building. You know, where we're going to have the, or it's just going to be storage, the other side of the weight room.
Right, 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 right.
I mean, all there is there is the metal building itself, the concrete floor on the side if it's done. I mean, there's, there's no finishes, so that, I think on this schedule.
That'll be able to move it far.
That schedule says, or this schedule says, that that, that building will be available May twenty eighth, which will be right on time.
Yeah, just no finish work.
Right, it's just, that would mean we move this floor, the rubber mats over there, find an area of the square footage.
I'm sure they're using a lot of that for construction itself though, I would imagine.
The storage.
What do you think, tools and?
Well, but it'll be far enough along at that time that they have to move out of, if the resting room there or the, uh, weight rooms takes half of it, you guys gotta clear out, this is going to be the weight room.
Doesn't make it work yet.
Just, just do it.
Yeah.
So we'll continue to work through that. See, I mean, it's, it's too early to call. Maybe with some overtime, some good weather, you know, things could improve. So bad weather could get worse. I mean, it.
Yeah, right.
It's just, it's just too early to tell right now, but they plugged in the date.
Tim, were they giving you an explanation on the delay of the delivery of the building?
Only that, the, the shop drawing process took longer than was, was anticipated. Nobody exceeded their time. The contractor has a certain amount of days to submit the products and they did. The, the con, the architect had to, I think, uh, fifteen days to respond and they did on the fifteenth. I mean, it just, everything's been down to the last day and it's been gone through two, a couple of times. It's gone back and forth, so it's, they've used every day possible. They're trying to squeeze the manufacturer now as well because they work with them a lot and try to get it two weeks earlier, a week earlier, whatever they can. But again, this just got in their hands today. They gave it to me and I just wanted to share with you guys, so they're going to try and do something to improve that, what happens.
Tim, we spoke a while back ago and I mean, at that time, we were thinking two weeks because of the steel. Is that still a problem too or not?
This is the steel that I'm talking about, it's, it's the building.
So it's, it's a combination of the shop drawings and the steel?
Well, maybe what you were talking about before, in order to start digging the foundations, they needed approvals on the, on the anchor bolts and the rebar. Is that what, does that department, you're thinking of?
I don't know, I thought that you told me that the steel did not come in, was not going to come in on time.
That was the first, the, the first thing was the anchor bolts and the rebar. But they were, so they got, they're, they're a little bit late starting the foundations, but they'll still be done in time for the building to, to be built on top of the top.
So it wasn't, it's not the structural steel girders then?
That's what this is now, before we delay, yes, it's the whole, it's the whole building package. Um, Nucor, Nucor is the, um, is the manufacturer that upped this steel building. And they're saying the fabrication is going to start on February twentieth. They're going to deliver the building between March twenty seventh and April third. It's, it, we just got this piece of paper today, the giving, that's the first sign, sign that we have. Um, the other things that I wanted to report on as far as the field house or the utilities, I'm sure everyone's seen that the storm sewer work has started, the water line and the, and the sanitary line are all, have all begun. Unfortunately, all the work is across the roadways for the most part right now. There's a little bit of repairs that all have to be done on one. The, um, the school driveway, sailor way, drive is, is completed.
Can I get a question on that? I, I've noticed that with that, for the water line, there's quite a bit of digging that's been done near that little field. I see topsoil and grass isn't scheduled until June fifteenth. I know the city actively uses that field starting mid-May. It's a, no, we can take in that, you're sure they, they gotta get that done.
Yeah, that little field.
The little, city uses that for all, that's probably the most.
When's the first day? When, when they have a pace?
They probably start practicing early May, I think they start games.
Those little kids.
Yeah.
That's probably, that's the biggest, that's probably the most kids, kindergarten, youth are.
Yeah, that'll be done, so I mean, I'll just let them know as soon as they, you know, it'll be done here in, I mean, where they're permitting it a couple of weeks.
Look at that field, you think, oh, there's no way to use this thing, but it's used all the time.
Oh, I know it is, yeah, I know.
The other thing is, I'm looking at the paving and the driving and that kind of stuff, just make sure they work closely with Mr. Britton or his softball's going to start, that's where the band ages on that side, all that kind of stuff. Um, also, we talked about maybe doing something with the soccer field with water. That'd be separate, but now since it's all tore up, is there a way to make that happen? Rooster Club, we had any discussions?
We're talking about irrigation.
Trying to get some, trying to bring in water to like their concession stand.
Oh.
Well, it sounds like at a minimum you ought to, if you, I mean, it's not part of the project now, but if the water lines run up there, you gotta run it under that road so that it doesn't have to cross the road, same as we're, same as we're doing with.
Equipment. They're selling food out with the low running water, some food inside.
So that's on the soccer field concessions.
Right next to the road, yeah.
You just want water for that.
Yeah, like I said, they're suing food.
One inch line.
Requesting softball too.
Yeah, right.
It's a little bit further run, but.
Yeah. One thing, water for the fields, another thing, if you're serving food, you don't have any water. I mean, sanitation issues and that's, can't wash anything.
Right.
This is breaks your family.
The only, the only thing I'm going to, I'm going to, the only thing I'm going to caution you on is we're, and we can do anything.
We're trying to boost our money.
And that's, that's, that's great.
We just want the discussions to make sure that they're happening because now's the time to do it.
Yeah, because we're, we're really getting tight on funds. We're really, really hard.
Yeah, sure.
I mean, but it's, I mean, it'd be crazy not to go under, to put a new road in and then have to dig it up a year from now or whatever.
Right, Tim.
I'll, I'll get the price.
Yeah, if you can get me that, that get with me, that's going to be obviously a top priority with the road and the beginning of town and now.
Okay, let's see how that'll have to be metered.
Okay.
Might be able to just draw.
I mean, heavy water, it's clearly.
It'd be nice just to ring it right out of the field house and so it's just all in one meter, you know, I mean, so we don't have another.
Right. And again, it's very little water ever used.
Right.
What's your water of the field with back there?
Soccer field?
What's your water?
He's got a, one of those things that, a big hose that moves the.
What's it, to a side?
It's right by, taps right in by the, uh.
By the purple building.
By the purple bar.
All the time.
There's a tap right there, put in, let me put the football irrigation system in.
You'd still be.
Yeah, because we wanted to.
Like.
Stand it possibly later on.
Could make this line instead of, I mean, just thinking out loud, if you're running a one inch line, the concession stand, it makes sense to just do it on a two inch, I mean, it costs, it's all about the digging, the materials, you see, I mean, right, the price between the two pipes isn't really, so what, do you think you'd want to look at irrigating that field different? Is that what you're saying?
That's, that's real lost turn. I mean, we don't have to, and again, that'd have to be a booster project or something because the school district's not going to pay to irrigate that for now.
No, I'm not saying irrigate it, but to bring a line, the cost might be very minimal just to bring a difference between a one inch line and a two inch line just to cross, cross the road.
For sure, if we can.
No question about it, we definitely want to.
If we can upgrade the line, there's, that would be a no.
Because if, if I'm saying you guys just want to bring a line across the road and that's it pronounced?
So there's options.
Or you don't want to let, pipe into the, do you want them to be, might be in the concession stand?
Our guys, as long as it's under the road, our guys can, our guys can finish.
Okay, so just same as we're doing with the technology, just get it, so we don't have to tear up.
Yeah, just get it onto the road. Cause that's the main expense, right?
It's gonna be a different line in the other direction, I mean, they will be on the same side of the road anyway, whatever.
Right. But we'll just bring a two inch line there or whatever side they say we need. Just camp it up, maybe the bell box somewhere.
It's like, uh.
All right, on to item thirteen, date and location of upcoming board meetings. Um, we've got the proposed regular meeting Monday, February ninth, seven. So it was regular meeting on Monday, March ninth. And then I know we want to put in the work session sometime in the next couple of weeks, you just let me know or what doesn't work for you?
Wide open, I just, just have one week open.
The whole week?
Yeah, I leave on Monday, then I get back on, we're not, I can do a Friday, but no, I'm going on Friday. Do a Saturday.
All right, Saturday.
Do a Saturday before or after. So if you guys call, I just wish, I'd like to be there for that too.
Are we good on Saturday? 24th or the 31st?
Let's just all, we'll get back to you.
Okay, that's fine. Are they good February 9th? So let me know at the 24th Saturday, what time do we want, eight, nine?
I'll move, I'll say.
Mr. Haberman?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.